...meeting of December 8th. My name is Jim Leehan. To my left is my fellow Selectman Scott Bugby, to his left our Town Administrator Jack Hathaway, and to his left, Marion Harrington. Welcome back. Nice to have you back. Mr. Palumbo will not be with us tonight. He has had a death in the family, and our hearts and prayers go out to him for this evening. And his grandmother passed away at the ripe age of 105 years old. But it is still a loss, and we just keep our prayers with Jeff. Before we start, if I could ask the board just for a moment of silence in respect to the tragedy that took place in San Bernardino and the horrible act of terrorism and the loss of lives that took place there. So if you would just join me for one moment. Thank you. Thanks very much. And to all of our first responders, we are grateful to all of you. I want to advise everyone that this meeting tonight is being both audio and videotaped. And Mr. Hathaway, would you read the agenda, please?
I would be happy to. The Norfolk Board of Selectmen meeting for Tuesday, December 8, 2015. First order of business, we have a tax rate public hearing. We have Lorraine Fields, who is our chief assessor here, along with Julie McCarthy, our finance director. Following that, we have the Town Administrator report, including action items to consider setting an election date for debt exclusion ballot question based on our prior town meeting. We have the renewal of the annual licenses for 2016. We have please consider allowing restaurants Eagle Brook Saloon, Horse and Carriage, and Nevada's Bar &amp; Grill to remain open on New Year's Eve until 2:00 a.m. And finally, we have consideration of extending the term of the zoning working group committee to December 31, 2016. So I was hoping we could invite Lorraine and Julie up to the table.
Welcome.
Do we have to read the public notice, Jack? Or can we do a waiving of the reading?
I would read it.
Read it. Read it? Okay. Public hearing notice? I'd be happy to. The public hearing notice, "The Norfolk Board of Selectmen hereby gives notice of public hearing that will be held to consider and vote the use classification of all properties in the town of Norfolk for the purposes -- for tax purposes in fiscal year 2016. This hearing will be conducted under the provisions of Mass. General Law, Chapter 40, Section 56 as amended, and will be held in the Selectmen's Meeting Room 124, 1 Liberty Lane, Norfolk, Mass. 02056 on Tuesday, December 8, 2015 at 7:00 p.m. Citizens are encouraged to attend this hearing."
As you can see, we have a large crowd.
Of non-citizens.
It's great. Lorraine, please join us. And this is your first meeting with us, so welcome.
Thank you very much. Unfortunately, I'm also new at the meeting.
Yeah, perfect.
I want to say...
Don't forget the microphone. Yep. It's for the TV audience.
Yeah, not for us. Is it green?
Yes, it is.
Good smile.
I want to thank you all for welcoming me to my very first classification hearing as the new assessor in Norfolk. As most of you know, a classification hearing is usually working better than this. Okay. Sorry, this will be technical difficulties.
Will we be the driver's way?
Can you -- yeah, do you probably -- sorry about that. Or you can sit there and poke the button on the computer. Sorry. As I know that you have been through this before, for the people who are listening elsewhere, the purpose of the hearing is to determine whether to shift the tax burden among the four classes of real property. That's residential, open space, commercial, and industrial, as well as that of personal property. At this moment in time, the town has a single tax rate, and it is up to the Board of Selectmen to continue that or to change it. In other words, have a split tax rate. It's probably important to, particularly to the people at home, to understand who sets the tax rate. The responsibility of the assessor is to assess the value of the property in town, but the assessor does not set the tax rate. The tax rate is actually determined each year as a result of town meeting and budgets and decisions that the townspeople make as to what services they would like.
Can you do that?
This year, the proposed tax rate for fiscal 2016 is $18.08 per thousand valuation. Um...
Let me go back? Sorry.
I don't know. Nope, you're good. Go ahead. Thank you. Residential properties increased about 2 percent, land values about 5 percent, and commercial and industrial properties between 3 and 4 percent. I think a number of people expected there to be a slightly higher increase in property values. One thing to consider is that when we're talking about valuation, that we're reviewing properties that sold in the year 2014 rather than the last year. So we are still seeing valuations increase, but it doesn't affect it this year. I don't know how well you can see this, but the assessed value for 2016, the average assessed value, is 439 and 503. If you look down, you'll see that in spite of the fact that it's gone up a little, we have yet to return to our pre-boom, if you will, or pre-bust values. We have -- we are just now at 2009 values. We still haven't gone back to our height in 2007, which was 477,000. So I know a lot of people have questions about how we see increases in valuation or decreases. God bless you. Some of those things include changes to the property record card, which we see during a cyclical inspection. We encourage our taxpayers to come and take a look at their property record card and to help us keep our valuations current. If you have -- if you demolish a property, or you take down an addition, or you take down your deck, or get rid of your shed, these are important things for us to know as well. If your property is damaged in some way, a fire, water damage, a truck comes through your window, all these bad things, this reduces your value, and you should let us know if we don't find out on our own. The biggest driver for increases in property value are market changes. And as many of you would probably know, the values have gone up over the last several years, and we see them continuing this year. However, it was a slight increase, and so the average is 2 percent. Another big increase is new construction. And as you know, if you live here in town, there are several construction projects going on, Pulte Homes. The properties over on -- well, they've just completed the condominium construction, and then you'll see various individual houses being built around town. In addition, things like additions, renovations, building permits, these are other ways that we track changes in valuation on your property. So the average assessment for a single-family home is 440,000 for fiscal 2016. Obviously, it's an average. Some properties are lower, and some of our newer, larger homes are significantly higher. But using averages as a basic point, the average tax bill for this assessment is just under $8,000. For condominiums, the average assessment is 376,000, and the average tax bill for this assessment is $6,800. And here's the formula for determining the tax rate. The tax levy, which is generated from all of the things that -- all of the services provided by the town, divided by the total assessed value, and that gives us our proposed tax rate of $18.08. This is a little harder to view, I think, but for purposes of this meeting, there is an option for the Board of Selectmen to class -- change the classification. And that means, instead of using a factor of 1, which means all residential properties, commercial, and industrial, and personal property are taxed at the same rate, the Board of Selectmen has the option to shift the tax rate. And as you can see, if you scan down under "commercial," you'll see that the tax rate we propose of 1808 increases to 1899, 1989, 20, and so on, all the way down to 2713. Now, this is pretty esoteric if you look at it this way. So if you consider it this way, if we did 125 percent split, a single-family home with the average assessment of 440 would save about $150 a year. A commercial property in town that has an average assessment of 705 would pay an additional $3,200. You can see, because the town has such a large residential base, a shift of this nature would shift quite a bit of a burden over onto the commercial and industrial properties. If you look at the next slide, which is the 150, where it was 150. Again, you can see that a single-family home would save an average of $300 a year, a condominium about 266, and then a commercial property would have an average assessment increase of 6,300, and an industrial property of 2,400. These are small businesses, particularly on the industrial side, so you can see the impact is fairly significant. And I think visually, this shows it a little more dramatically than numbers. The green line, you can see it's just slowly dipping down, and that's the -- would be the residential if we shifted. And the red line going up is what would happen, the impact on the commercial should we shift it in the other direction. But it isn't up to the Board of Assessors. It's up to the Board of Selectmen, and so that's the information that I came to provide you. Is there anything else I can offer?
Lorraine, we did, in fairness and full disclosure, we did chat about this before the meeting. 2 percent was a disappointing number for residential property. I mean, just based on what realtors have told me and the sales and all of that, I thought it would -- and I know it's a year behind. I thought it would be substantially higher. What do you think's going to happen next year?
I think it's going to be significantly higher than -- I think it's going to be more in line with what you expected this year.
So 4 or 5 percent?
Yes. That's what I'm seeing so far in the sales I've looked at for 2015.
Which would result, assuming we don't incur any additional burdens on top of the tax rate, would be the reduction of the tax rate?
That's correct.
Scott?
I mean, thank you. It's always said, like you said, we have such a small, non-residential base. You mentioned about the burden on industrial, because they tend to be smaller. I did notice, I was reading about Rentham, where they have a -- not that I'm proposing we have a ship rate, but they have a break for small businesses, too. That's something that's -- I don't know if you've seen that in the past.
Yes.
Where less than so many employees. I don't know if it's revenue-based or employee-based, but -- because Rentham gets -- you know, can do with the outlets. They have a lot of commercial.
Correct. And I think in a situation where you have a town that has an enormous tax base, like the Rentham outlets, something like that works, because they're so large that they can absorb that, whereas they're small tax -- if you took that out of the mix, it's more like Norfolk.
Right.
They're small -- we're small business -- we have mostly small business owners, and so an extra $2,000, $6,000 can make the difference between them making it or not making it, whereas the Rentham outlets, an extra $2,000, $6,000.
They split it over.
I was going to say it.
Yeah.
Right. They probably spend it in their bathroom.
Wow, okay. So, I mean, no hope yet for -- I don't see any...
No hope for a Rentham outlet yet?
No, I don't want an outlet. I mean, just for the split rate idea, or just to try to save the burden on the individual home.
Do you think traffic will be a little tough on grocery?
I think it would be -- yes, I think it would be a challenge.
Well, it's a no-brainer vote. We know we don't have an option. We are 95 percent residential tax base, and it is what it is, and we are who we are. And we want our small businesses to thrive and do well. So, at least for me, it's a pretty easy vote.
Jim, I did a little bit of a quick analysis of just looking at how, why the rate changed.
Well, actually, that'd be a good discussion, actually.
Yeah, so you need a...
Yeah, you may have given -- I've got -- unfortunately, I got into the -- ah, thank you. You're here to help. Thank you, sir.
That's what the clerk does.
Just looking at the 2015 tax rate, it's $17.66, and if the only thing we did for a year was just change the values in the properties, which is majority of Lorraine's work, we would have had $13.9 million of appreciation. So that, taking that same revenue divided by that new value in properties, our tax rate would have dropped 16 cents. We've gone from $17.66 down to $17.50. But we know that's not all we do. We also -- we have new growth, which is really only from a kind of rounding point of view changes the tax rate, but because we add new revenue, that's the $690,000 of new tax revenue that Lorraine has picked up. But along with that, we pick up $39 million of new property values. So that, we add that into the denominator of the calculation, as well as the numerator. And then, in addition, at town meeting, we add the 2.5 percent of tax growth. And, you know, we all know we need to fund town hall and fund public safety and the schools. So that's where we pick up that $622,000 of, almost $623,000 of new revenue. And that alone drives the tax rate up 39 cents. So that appreciation that we picked up that drove the price down is already wiped out by that prop 2.5 tax growth. And then the one remaining piece is the change in the exempt debt. Every year, we, as we finish the tax rate, that's, you know, we start the tax rate by backing out last year's exempt debt, the debt service. We add that on to the tax rate, the tax bills at the very end of the process, if you will. And then, at the end of the process this year, we add on the new tax exempt debt service. And this year is unusual for us, because it's going up by $289,000, and that's because last year was the last year of the H.L. Day School debt process. We had finished paying the debt service, so we no longer had to pay out money. But the good news for the taxpayers, myself included, was that we were still -- we still received the last payment from this old school building authority reimbursement process. We received $325,000. So we lowered our tax rate by $325,000 last year. So really, our debt, our tax exempt debt went down by $30,000 or so, $35,000 this year, but we no longer got that credit from the MSBA. So actually, our -- the hit on the tax bill went up by $289,000, which raises the tax rate up 18 cents, which, I hate to say, raises the tax rate. It really, you know, but it really, last year was artificially low because of that SBA payment. So that's how we get from $17.66 up to $18.08.
Well, King Philip refinanced and saved us $88,000, which is about 10 cents on our exclusion, excluded debt. So that helped. And we are owed over, somewhere in the neighborhood of $8 to $1 million worth of reimbursement from the state, which I know it's a different system, so it doesn't come on an annual basis as the old system did, but that payment should come in at least, hopefully, in this fiscal year.
Yeah.
So we can certify that and have it towards next year. Whether it goes through the -- to debt, or -- well, it will go to debt. Either way, it comes off the tax rate. It doesn't matter. So, yeah, I hate to say wait till next year, but next year, optimistically, it looks like we should have a reasonable reduction in the tax rate, barring something unforeseen. Because the public safety building, if passed, which I think, at least speaking for myself, I hope it does, would put about, well, 73 cents if we don't apply the $1 million, and about 65 cents in that range if we do apply. It's about 7 cents, if I remember, somewhere in that range.
Yeah.
So even with that addition, if we get 5, 6 percent increase, we still have a lower tax rate next year. And that debt wouldn't hit till 2018.
Probably. Yeah, we'll have some temporary debt for a couple of years, and then we'll...
Carry that.
Yeah.
We're carrying the 1.8 now.
Yeah.
And we're paying interest only on that, I think, aren't we?
Yes, we are.
So if you did 10...
Give Jim a minute. He's going to figure out next year's tax rate. You don't have to bother him. You don't have to do reprostation.
Well, where were you earlier?
I can't help it.
I could have used your help.
Yeah. Next, stop driving around looking at houses, too, if you're happy with the 5 percent increase.
We have to look at 25 percent of those, so run out.
Well, you know, it is what it is. You know, when your assessed values go up only 2 percent and your tax base goes up 2.5, the math just doesn't work. So it is what it is. Anyway, I think we're in agreement that we're going to maintain a level tax rate.
I would hope so.
I would certainly hope so, too. We in agreement? We have to agree, otherwise we're in trouble.
Yeah, well, I make a motion to continue to use the single tax rate.
I will second. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
We have to vote the rate, too? Or is it just what it is?
No. You don't get to set the rate.
Okay.
We don't set the rates.
Okay. You sign -- you sign -- you do. You sign off.
But we sign off on it, but we don't set it. Yeah.
I get blamed for it anyways.
Well, Lorraine, we're going to see -- can you push that 5 to 6, up to about 7 or 8 next year, just to, you know, do your magic?
Well, I think my selling license has expired, so I'm not sure, but Norfolk is a fantastic town, and I know people want to come and live here.
It's irrelevant to the tax bill, and that's what people don't understand, unfortunately. They all look at the number of 18, or 17, or 15, or whatever it is. One gentleman in town recently sent us the town report for Chatham. I wish we had the approximately 40 percent of revenue that Chatham has. It doesn't exist in the town of Norfolk. And I believe their schools are 20 to 25 percent of their operational budget, and ours are 67 percent of our operational budget.
Right.
So it's not something that can be compared, but...
I think the quality of life in Norfolk is what everybody wants.
I'll take it any day of the week. Well, thank you. It's nice to have you on board.
Well, it's a pleasure to be on board. And I'm enjoying it, and I can't tell you how much help I got from everybody in town hall for this, my first year. Everybody was so helpful, especially when the Department of Revenue was here. You wouldn't believe how fast people here move.
Well, I know you've worked hard, and you're trying to make things fair for all residents. And not to imply that they weren't. I don't mean that, but, you know, the assessed process should be one of fairness, and I know you're working hard at that. So thank you.
Thank you.
And I would just echo, obviously, that she has done, and she even had a -- she had to suffer through a little computer problem, I don't know, a month and a half ago or so, the server. It wasn't even her computer. The server let you down. So she recovered. She had to recreate a lot of work, and it was a -- she put in a lot of extra time to do that. So I appreciate that, Lorraine. And Julie works with Cheryl, and, you know, obviously, the county office, the treasury office, and the assessor's office. But Julie has done a great job. You know, I got to say, this year, I have had little to nothing to do with the tax rate, other than doing my dance at town meeting. But it's been nice having -- we've got a great team here. So it's -- thank you both. And thank you, Julie and Cheryl, back home.
I'll tell you later what my off-the-puff estimate for next year's tax rate is.
I'll expect you to be in my office helping.
Yeah, don't...
Careful. What time do you get in?
Oops.
You don't work on Fridays.
I'm an early riser.
You'll have the Middleton on one side, and Mr. Leehan on the other side, and you'll get a lot of work done. All right, John?
I like numbers. You don't want me there. Well, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
So we have Town Clerk Ms. Carol Green here tonight.
Carol, how are you?
Carol was nice enough to -- Carol was nice enough to join us, just to have the discussion about setting the date for the election. Obviously, Carol is the...
Leap year, huh?
Leap year. Missed it by that much.
Well, there was, for those at home, if they didn't attend town meeting, there was a discussion. We -- the town did vote to go forward with a ballot question for the public safety building, and that election has to be called by law within 90 days of the vote of town meeting, if I have it correct, Madam Clerk. Is that right?
Correct.
And because this is leap year, the election, which are the primary, which quite frankly, I think we had all forgotten about, is March 1st. Is that right?
Yes.
And that is 91 days.
Yes.
Which means we don't have that choice, correct? We cannot hold the election on March 1st.
No, we cannot. We have to hold it. It has to be at least 35 days out from when the selectmen call it. If you make the decision tonight and call it tonight, it has to be at least 35 days out, and it cannot be longer than 90 days, which is February 29.
So which day's going to have the biggest snowstorm, do you think? We can...
Here we go again. We're not having a particular snowstorm. We're not helping.
That's the day we don't -- yeah, I know. That's the day we don't want it.
No. That would bring all kind of havoc.
I know. So we have -- we can't hold it on the same day, so we have to hold a second election by law. We have no option. That's off the table for us.
Correct.
And it's because of leap year.
Yep.
Okay. You have a recommendation?
Yeah, I don't want people to read anything into that either. I mean, it's not like, when we scheduled fall town meeting, we always scheduled the fall town meeting.
Always.
Generally, for November. We pushed it back two weeks because of a scheduling conflict there. So that's why the meeting ended up on December 1st.
Right.
And we wouldn't want to hold the meeting any later, because we want high attendance at town meeting. We don't want to get into the holiday season, or we don't want to get into the bad weather season. So I don't want people to think, and people have said frankly on Facebook, you know, whatever, "We're manipulating. We're doing this or that." We're not. We held town meeting when we normally held...
Manipulating what?
Manipulating when we're going to hold the ballot.
Oh, goodness.
So I just -- so we're not. We're holding town meeting when we typically hold town meeting, and we have a, you know, we decided to have a vote contingent on a debt exclusion, so now the next process is to schedule that debt exclusion. So that's what we're doing.
Well, remember, the original town meeting was scheduled for November 17. We have always held the fall town meeting in November, with one exception, when we held it in January, when the state cut our state aid halfway through the year, and we had a cold emergency meeting in January to cut our budget. We had no choice. And we had to push it back because of the posting issue, because of the holiday, whatever that holiday was. Oh, Veterans Day.
Veterans Day.
And so we had to push it back to 23rd, or whatever day it was. I forgot.
December 1st.
21st, thank you. And honestly, I'll freely admit, I wasn't aware that there was a primary election on March 1st. I didn't know that. But that said, you know, none of this was predetermined or planned. It just falls where it falls.
Even had we had the town meeting two weeks prior, that would have even backed us up to...
Would it back us up?
February...
15 days instead of 14.
Yeah, February 15th.
Yeah.
So it would have taken it even further.
Wouldn't have made any difference.
So the bottom line is, we've got to schedule the summer between January 12th and February 29th. Carol and I talked about dates, and I think I've talked to each of you kind of off the record, I mean, off the -- off-camera, one-on-one, about potentially January 19th. It seemed like a date that was not around a holiday, and, you know, and we're also trying to do this relatively quickly. The other towns are waiting for us to get going, because we need to get the regional communication center up and running.
And for folks at home, that is one of the reasons why we wanted to make sure that we moved this as reasonably quickly as we could, because the rec is going to start construction in the spring. And we're using the same architect, and it will save us considerable amount of money if we can do these projects simultaneously with the same architect and, you know, so all of the financial logic is there to move this as reasonably quickly as possible. So I mean, I don't know. What do you think?
19th is fine with me.
I mean...
Carol, that's fine with you, right here?
That's fine with me. The 19th...
What were the choices, 19th?
It has to be after the 12th.
Well, it has to -- yeah, it's the 12th or after. The 12th is, I mean, you're still in kids vacation, you know, college vacation time and stuff like that, and families doing things. So I think the 19th would be a great, would be a great choice. You don't want to push it too much farther than that, because it's, you know, it's still
The other towns are waiting for us to, to get going because we need to get the, the Regional Communication Center up and running.
And for folks at home, that is one of the reasons why we wanted to make sure that we moved this as reasonably quickly as we could, because the rec is going to start construction in spring, in the spring. And we're using the same architect, and it will save us considerable amount of money if we can do these projects simultaneously with the same architect and, you know, so I mean, all of the financial logic is there to, to move this as reasonably quickly as possible. So I mean, I don't, I, what do you think?
Nineteenth is fine with me.
I mean...
Carol, that's fine with you, right here?
That's fine with me. The nineteenth...
What were the choices, nineteenth?
It has to be after the 12th.
Well, it has, yeah, it's the 12th or after. The 12th is, I mean, you're still in kids vacation, you know, college vacation time and stuff like that, and families doing things, so I think the 19th would be a great, would be a great choice. You don't want to push it too much farther than that because it's, you know, it's still up in the air game with the weather. And the later we wait...
Well, we were golden until about February 3rd last year, so...
Hopefully, that holds true this year.
My gosh, I hope so.
Can I ask, there's some questions, too, about costs. So do you have, you know, not, not an exact, not going to hold you, ballpark as to what it costs? Do you, I mean...
The cost of a, the cost of running a Town Election is approximately $4,000, right in that neighborhood. I do have it in my budget. I budget for one extra election because the state really loves to throw in extra elections for something, and I try to plan on that, and, you know, this time that, you know, we're using it. Even if we did run the election with the election in March, the only thing that it would really save us would be election salaries, the salaries of the poll workers. We would still have to pay for ballots. We would still have to pay for card programming. We would still have to pay for everything that, you know, goes into election expenses. So it would save us...
That's a good point. So what would the cost differential be if we held one election versus two?
The cost differential would be about $2,000. So it's not, it's not a huge, not a huge savings.
Unfortunately, we don't like to waste anything, but we don't have a choice.
Yeah, you know. But it wouldn't save us as much as we would think it would.
You still have to have a separate ballot printed.
Everything else is the same. Exactly.
So do I have a motion?
Yeah, I, I move to hold the election to consider debt exclusion on January 19th.
I will second. Any further discussion? And you're good? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you, Carol.
So we'll send you a formal letter in the morning.
Great, thank you.
Thank you. Thanks for coming. You guys probably don't want to talk about licenses, I don't think, for...
Oh, please.
You're welcome to stay. Saying stuff comes up now.
It does sound like a really good time.
Doesn't it?
Thank you.
I'm just going to pull the pen out of my eye.
One question for our new Finance Director before you leave.
Sure.
Oh, here we go. This is where it gets fun.
If I understand the process, when we get this, let's pick a number, just sort of hack it. Say we get a million dollars back from SBA, and we think it's going to be in that range. That has to go through the process of free cash certification, which would probably be in October?
Correct. Probably somewhere between early September and October, so you would be able to do something at your next Town Meeting, to you, to actually appropriate the money.
So we could do, I mean, we could get, we'll have it certified prior to the Fall Town Meeting.
Correct.
So it can be appropriated at that time.
Yes. That's when it would be available for use.
And if, and if we were going to apply it to the Public Safety, you know, assuming the Public Safety passes, and then we decided to do that, obviously, we'd, we'd still have time to do that because we haven't, we wouldn't have borrowed all the money for the Public Safety project at that time.
But if we applied it to existing debt?
There are, there are funny rules about applying it to existing debt, and Julie, maybe I'll speak to this more intelligently than I can.
Well, at that time, we would still probably, that debt would be just on a short term. We'd have a ban out on it. We wouldn't have any long-term debt. So we could just determine how long we wanted to keep it on a short-term ban and possibly pay down those funds when we go to borrow on the long-term amount. Say it was a million dollars. So then we could, we could, you know, we would be paying down, you know, a million dollars less.
So I'm just, help me see if I understand all the options we have. We, we could, could we apply it straight to the tax rate?
I'm going to say probably not. I mean, you can always, you can use funds to directly reduce the tax rate.
Well, we did with the SBA, the reimbursement from the HL of day school.
Yeah, that's, that's a reduction off of the debt exclusion.
You, I mean, you...
Well, either way, I mean, it, you know, I mean, the debt exclusion's over and above, it's in the tax rate. It's built in. I mean, it's about a buck sixty-seven, I think, we're paying for debt now on the tax rate.
Right, right.
We could, we could keep it in free cash, and then in the next annual budget, we could use that money to support the budget...
The debt budget.
And then not go up to the levy limit.
Correct.
But the problem with that, if we applied it to the tax rate, is it artificially reduces it. In the following year, it goes back up.
Correct.
That's the problem with that process. So that really doesn't work. That's, that's, that's smoke and mirrors to me. So we don't want to do that. So the logical answer is to apply it to either the 1.8...
Yes.
And then just absorb the eight from the rent that we get from rec.
You could do that.
So we don't, that stays pretty neutral in the operational budget, which would reduce the fourteen to the 12.2.
Right.
Which would take about seven cents off the tax rate.
That would be a good thing.
Did you put that in your calculation on the sheet?
He didn't have to. He just, I just watched it. I just watched the smoke come out.
I already got that, I already got that calculation in my sheet. I've already taken seven cents off.
Our annual debt service for this year for the schools, $1.5 million, so... So even if we kind of did what you were talking about, was applying it like we did with that SBA money last year.
But we'd be better applying it to the 1.8, I think.
Yeah, I would rather.
I think that would make more sense for us.
Right.
And because that, that doesn't artificially deflate the rate and, and keeps it at a level decrease so that we're really living on whatever the assessments are, and we're not fooling people with it, which I don't want to do in any way, shape, or form.
Plus, we have to look at what, what interest rates we're talking about for all the different financial instruments that you're dealing with there.
Well, I mean, I'm, if you, if you can forecast interest rates, you're smarter than I am, but I, I don't think you're going to see any reasonable spike in rates for several years. That's just my humble, don't go to the bank on that opinion. But even if you get short-term spikes, it doesn't necessarily impact long-term rates anyway, so you need several substantial low spike rates, or short-term rates, spikes to impact the long-term rates. Okay.
Whatever, you know, when, when we determine we're going to receive those funds, I'll definitely, you know, check in with our rep. Kathy Reed was our long-term rep here. She has since retired, so we will be probably finding out who our new reps is going to be in the next six months or so, and that will be the person, you know, I will deal with. And they usually will guide you on matters like this.
I mean, I, you feel confident we'll get it in this fiscal year?
Confident might be a little overstating it, but I feel...
Reasonable chance?
Optimistic that we will. You know, just, they have, the, the SBA is, is, and our project manager are both very slow. Project manager, we can keep prodding, although we're not paying them anymore, so...
Unfortunately, he's fully paid, right?
Yeah.
No wonder he's slow. Okay. All right, thanks, guys.
Thank you.
Nice to see you both. Be careful going home.
Thank you.
Oh, we have the Sun Chronicle here. Hey, Stephen, how are you?
Night, thank you.
Good night, Carol, thank you.
We had a visitor yesterday from, I don't know their names, not important, but they were exploring a license for a convenience store at...
Rivers Edge?
Rivers Edge, yeah.
Oh, cool, good.
So a little convenience store that, I thought he said fresh fruits and vegetables along with beer and wine, but, so, you know, not that we don't, you know, we have enough of the beer and wine type places, but I was excited to hear him talking about fresh fruits and vegetables and stuff. That's, that's what I've wanted to get in the center of town for a long time, but...
Like a farmer's market.
Yeah, a little farmer's market.
Get that for my community garden coming up, so no problem.
We've made progress on that, by the way.
Looking forward to the spring. Can't wait to have my veggies.
And so, yeah, the Lions have done a great job. The fence is up on both sides. It's open on the end so that we can plow it to make it usable, and contacted someone today that I think might be very helpful and instrumental in helping us organize it.
Oh, good.
So we'll be ready for the spring, I hope, so we're off and running. And just one other report on that while I'm thinking of it. The town of Needham used CPC funds to totally renovate their old Town Hall.
Oh, I know Holliston. Oh, they did, yeah, right.
They did.
Now that I think about that, I know Holliston did, too.
So there is, there is established precedent, and that's inside and out.
Needham's project was a huge project.
It was a huge project. And, and so there is, there is established precedent for our thought that we might be able to use CPC funds to restore Old Town Hall.
That'd be great.
And CPC was receptive. There was just a question about what they could or they couldn't do, what would fall under the scope, but a little further research has indicated that other towns have restored their old Town Halls both inside and out with CPC funds, so... And that would be a really cool building if it were restored, you know, ADA compliant to whatever degree it has to be, but if we could keep some of the, you know, the old Town Clerk's cage and things of that nature. I mean, it's just, there's some kind of cool things about that old building.
Marion's old desk.
Marion's old desk. It's still there, I'm sure, yeah.
Got a name carved into the thing.
So anyway, just a couple of updates for you. All right, sir?
All right, sir. I have the annual licenses, so if we start with the liquor licenses, these are all renewals.
You're going to be busy, Mr. Clerk.
Yes, no, no, liquor license, no issues from the chief or any complaints that we know of on the, at least starting with liquor?
No, sir.
Okay. Can I do them all at once? You know, make a motion, okay? I'd like to make a motion to approve renewal of the liquor license for the following establishments: Eagle Brook Saloon, Nevada's Bar and Grill, Horse and Carriage Restaurant, Celia's Coffee House, Norfolk Wine and Spirits, Provo Discount Liquors, Linda's Variety Store, Norfolk Food Mark, and Four Kicks.
I will second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Moving on now to the common, for you?
Victor.
Victor.
Again, any questions, Jack? You know, they're completely up with the Board of Health and everything they need or anything like that? I will make a motion to approve the following establishments: Eagle Brook Saloon, Nevada's Bar and Grill, Horse and Carriage Restaurant, Four Kicks, Celia's Coffee House, Norfolk Town Pizza, Burke's Restaurant, Dunkin' Donuts on Main Street, Center Ice Inc., Aroma Italian Pizza and Roast Beef, Subway, and Dunkin' Donuts on Denim Street.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Now, entertainment licenses, these are renewal, these are renewal, these are renewal of existing entertainment licenses. I will make a motion to approve Eagle Brook Saloon for live music, secular days and Sundays, one to five instruments from 8:00 PM to 1:00 AM. Four Kicks, 11 coin-operated arcade machines, secular days and Sundays, 7:00 AM to midnight. Norfolk Rink Management, Norfolk Rink Management Co., Inc., three coin-operated arcade machines, secular days and Sundays, 7:00 AM to midnight. And Nevada's Bar and Grill, live music, secular days and Sundays, single container or DJ. Hours are 8:00 PM to 1:00 AM.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Now, we have Class 1, 2, and 3 licenses, so the following three, any, again, with the first three, Jack, Class 1, I get no issues with any?
No.
Okay. Complaints or anything like that? So Class 1 is Cliff Psycho, LVJ Trailers and Equipment, and MPG Motorsports for a renewal of Class 1 license.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Class 2, we're bond-required on all Class 2 licenses. I assume the bonds are up to date and intact?
Yep.
Okay, that would be Auto Clinic, Norfolk Auto Brokers, Norfolk Auto Inc., and Mitch's Repair Service.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
We have one Class 3 license for Norfolk Auto Repair. Motion to approve, I need a second. I'd like a second.
I'll second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And now we just have, how come just one tax license?
I was going to ask you that, too. Okay.
No issues and no complaints? We have a renewal for tax license for Norfolk Town Taxi Service.
I will second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
That's all it for licenses?
He's a very nice man. Comes in, cage on.
I think I need them to go to the train station, if I'm not mistaken.
We want to, we want to extend the zoning working committee for another year? That's the intent on this?
Amtrak.
What was that?
I thought he was taking, he said he was taking it to the train station.
Across the street. I can walk there, thank you.
You took a taxi from your house to the train station?
Start this, no, to the, to the Amtrak train station, folks, out there.
It's a roll to the train station from your house.
Yes, I can walk. I can, I do walk sometimes. I assume we have a request, then, to extend the term of the zoning working committee?
Yeah, and then you have the list of the board members there.
Okay.
I'm not sure if we checked with Mr. Leehan, but the others seem to be very eager to continue their work.
Is there something we can do about it? Maybe we can make a...
He's ex officio, so...
Okay. So it's not, no harm, no foul?
You can, actually, I don't, I don't know if you want to even have any, just, you know, it's up to the chairman if he wants to talk about...
I'm fine.
Yeah.
So I make a motion to extending the term of the zoning working committee to December 2006, December 31st, 2016. The following members: Ray Goff, Town Planner; Bob Bullock, Building Commissioner; Peter Diamond, At-Large Member; Aaron Hunt, At-Large Member; Thomas Gilbert, from the Board of Health Rep; Joyce Terrio, Conservation Committee Rep; John Welton, Planning Board Rep; Chris Weider, Zoning Board Appeals Rep; and our distinguished chairman, James Leehan, Ex-Officio and Non-Voting Member.
You're missing one member. You are. You're missing Walter Byron.
Oh, yes, and Walter Byron from...
Planning Board.
Any Board. Joyce might be from CPC, then, maybe?
And you're missing Joyce Terrio.
No, Joyce is there. Is she CPC, though?
Oh, excuse me. No, Joyce is Conservation.
And then we have two planning boards, then? Because Walter's planning...
There were two, there were two planning boards.
So I amend that to include Walter Byron from the Planning Board Rep. Thank you, Mr. Leehan. So I have a motion?
Do I have a motion?
I made that motion.
A little second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And we do...
And, and thank you to that group. They spent a lot of time last year, and it's not over, so we're grateful. We hope. Projects are still alive and well. Okay.
Wrapping up.
No? Beneficial. Do I have to sign licenses? Do I have to sign licenses?
Oh, I apologize.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Well, it was their fault. Please consider allowing restaurants, Eagle Brook Saloon, Horse and Carriage, and Nevada's Bar and Grill to remain open on New Year's Eve until 2:00 AM.
That's been standard now for the past couple of years. The chief's okay?
As long as I've been here.
And I make a motion to consider, to allow the following restaurants, Eaglebrook Saloon, Horse and Carriage, Nevada's Bar and Grill, to remain open on New Year's Eve until 2:00 AM.
I will second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you, Marion. Keeping us honest.
You ever been to Eaglebrook Saloon at midnight on New Year's Eve?
Nor have I. Nor have I. I try not to leave my house at midnight on New Year's Eve these days.
Good thing Mike Stelly wasn't requesting that.
It's a hotspot.
Good speakers.
Most of these need both of you.
Okay.
There's a couple that are just, like, the appointments, zoning working, they're just.
Okay. So what, got to sign this stuff here?
All right, well, rather, we can do that. Do we have any other business, Mr. Athol?
I don't know, we've had, well, the only thing I would tell you about is we've filled a couple of internal positions.
Oh, yes, you hired an assistant accountant, did you?
We did. I'm trying to think. So we've had, we've got a couple moving parts. So, so the good news is we've filled positions. The bad news is, which is also good news, we did it with internal candidates. So now we have new positions to fill. But we filled the assistant town accountant. Teresa Knowles is moving over from the DPW to take over Mary Norris's spot as the assistant town accountant. So that'll be great to have her. She's, Teresa's been with the town for a number of years now. Originally with the school, and now she's been with the DPW, I would guess, four or five years at least. So that's great news. And then we have Amy Brady moving from, as assistant town clerk, over to the Planning and Development Board.
Wow.
Work on CONCOM and ZBA. So that'll be great. And then we've, so now we've got to backfill those two positions. I don't think they've advertised the DPW job yet because that just happened. But I think Carol is, is working on filling the assistant town clerk position. She's also reclassified the job down, kind of back to where we were a number of years ago. We go, we, this has been the job of many different levels. So we've, she's moved the job down to nineteen hours or nineteen and a half, and also graded it as a records clerk, I believe was the official title. So that's a good budget saver for us.
Does she find hours is not needed as much? I guess?
Yeah.
That's great.
Carol's?
Carol's nice to find people within the system. That's great.
Yeah, and Carol is very, Carol's great at what she's doing. She, she cranks out a lot of work and, you know, so.
She is. Could I ask a favor for a second? Could we take a quick two-minute recess?
Sure.
You sign those. Let me just do about two sec, two minutes, and I'll be right back.
You got it?
I'm sure.
We're in recess. Thank you. Right back. Clerk?
Thank you. Uh, okay, sorry.
I was just talking about, we had, the governor yesterday had municipal officials in. I wasn't able to attend, but a lot of municipal officials went in for this bill that they've been working on through the MMA and, and through the governor's office. He's, you know, obviously, one of the things, his background is, he's got a lot of municipal experience being a selectman. So they've got this bill that it's, I read a summary of it the other day, and it's got, it's about fifteen pages, just the summary. Talks about all these different things that are changing. Some of them are procurement processing. You know, instead of having towns, every time we go out to procurement and spend $500 on a newspaper ad, we'll be able to put it up on our website and put it on the state's procurement. They've got a central repository of procurement ads. So it'll, it'll get to the people that need to get to it. You know, you won't have to put it into every local paper. So it'll save towns money and the streamlined process. The annual, the cyclical process for doing, visiting every home in town is potentially going to change from three years to five years. Still doing all the formularic changes to property every year based on sales and, and, you know, looking at the matrix of whether it's a colonial or the quality of the home, et cetera. But to actually physically visit every home will potentially change from every three years to every five years. I forget what got me started on that thought process. They're potentially going to lift the cap on liquor licenses and?
Go back to the towns.
And leave that at the town level. There was, there was a whole stream, a whole list of kind of common sense, it's, you know, municipal reform bill that they come out with every few years, but I was really impressed with all the things that they came up with.
Is it going to get through?
I don't, I, you know, it'll probably get tweaked a little bit, but I'm sure.
Most of it should.
Most of it will get.
Well, it is common sense. Maybe we'll know more when we get into the MMA meeting.
Yeah, I'm sure we will. Yeah, that'll be, by then it should be gone. Still trying to get our two local bills for the chiefs, extending the chiefs' employment. Still trying to get those through, but Representative Dooley is working on that. They're, they're in the third reading process at the House. We need the, somebody's, if anybody's related to the speaker, we just ask him to move it to the top of the pile.
The reading, so what would change? Isn't it just a straight, or is it, is it attached to something else? Or is it just straightforward, like, request, you know what I mean, you know, home move petition to extend it?
It's been, it's, my understanding of the process, and I'm obviously not an expert at the, at the House process, but it's been through the first two readings, which really is where the, any challenges and amendments would come through. The third reading is a reading of the final bill, so it's really the final vote of the, of the full House, rather than just at the committee level. You know, and Sean's been keeping us in the loop, and he doesn't want to, you know, and I've seen this happen. You know, you don't want to poke the bear, as they say, and, and frustrate the person who's scheduling the, the bills and have it moved down to the bottom of the pile by being a nudge. So he's, you know, he's advised them to try to remain a little bit patient, patient here, and let it just rise to the top as it naturally would.
Well, speaking of like, I know it's not on the agenda, but it's, they're upstreamlining things. Why, you know, I mean, maybe just as a layperson, probably, it strikes me as odd that the legislature has to decide on what we think is best for our town anyways, to extend a fire in chief. How about putting, yeah, I assume they make it as part of, you know, five years inspection, that never been thought about. I don't even know why the Senate and the, want to keep that myself, whether it's the House. I wouldn't want to debate it or deal with it.
Yeah, no, I don't, I don't know if that was considered as part of this. I, I.
You mean to extend the retirement age period?
No, just let the towns decide. Don't make it a stage.
It doesn't happen. You know, with all the pension reform and, you know, enforcing majority of the workers, you know, especially at municipal level, to work longer.
Actually, I can think of some good reasons why you wouldn't want to do that at the local level. There, there needs to be some consistency or uniformity to that for the process. And in a lot of it, because we fund a lot of the retirement components of that.
But why, but why force retirement at sixty-five?
Well, I see on the short side, because that's what it gets them to, but on the long side.
Chief level. I mean, I can understand that at an officer level, you know, that's, that's, you gotta get, you, you need to have somebody that can perform physically better than I can.
I don't know, either way, I just think it's odd, you know, same thing.
Well, I don't know. I, I.
I see on the short side where, like I said.
I guess I could see both sides of it. I.
It just seems like it bogs down the legislative, like, they have enough to deal with, they go through bills and stuff like that, too. And then why, honestly, why it takes long anyways? I don't really understand.
Well, I don't understand why it takes so long. I, I mean.
Scheduling a reading. I'm not sure what you're reading. It seems like it should just be one paragraph. Please approve the extension from sixty-five to sixty-eight. I don't know what you, I don't know what you're tweaking that, what you're reading on that. I don't know what it looks like.
Do we request sixty-five to sixty-eight, or do we go to sixty, to seventy? That's what I thought.
Whatever, I mean, whatever the paragraph says, it'll show me readings it takes to do a paragraph, but.
Well, I hope it gets through. And, and, you know, it doesn't obligate us, but, but I know both chiefs would at least like the opportunity to be considered. I'm sorry?
Just one? No, it was a?
Yeah, I don't have to sign that.
Yeah, that was me. The rest had to be signed.
Well, hopefully, we'll hear soon. Have a bit of luck. Are we going to, are we going to have any better feel for our insurance rates when we go in there on this twenty-second, do you think? Twenty-third?
Uh, we used to.
I mean, other than we know, I know we used to get them there, actually.
Till about two years ago, we used to get them at, at the MMA meeting. Now we get them a week or two after.
Well, we know it's double digits anyway.
We certainly believe it is, in the ten to fifteen percent range.
We need to, we need to schedule a follow-up meeting with the insurance committee. Because if we are going to work on this, we, we got to get it in position for spring meeting for the next fiscal year. And we, Scott, I don't know, do we ever, I know we discussed it, but I don't know if we ever made a decision that we were willing to, um, you, you remember the Weaver property and the issue with the, I don't know?
Some kind of road, right?
Were you on the board then? I don't remember, but you probably weren't. But when we bought the Weaver property, we, we had a right-of-way, or at least we thought we did, off of Chickataby that allowed us access to that road. And when we were clearing the deeds for all of the property, that one apparently still got stuck with the old developer and had multiple, it just wasn't a clean title situation, but no one knew who owned it. It is there, but no one knew who owned it. And we had to put up, I think, $10,000.
That's right, yeah.
Um, and we weren't willing to do it at the time and all that. And, and now the Municipal Foreword Housing Trust, because they have a buildable lot in there, is willing to put that $10,000 up, which means we need to put a warrant article on the Springtown meeting to take that, I think the only way we can do this now is to take that right-of-way by Omen at Domain.
Correct.
And then the $10,000 is held in abeyance, should anybody, which they won't, more than likely, claim that they have legal right to that, which is highly unlikely. But the good news is the state gets to keep it anyway. So basically, we're paying the state 10 grand.
Yeah. The, so, I don't know, Sue, Sue Jacobson had an engineer start to do some preliminary work on that, just to try and figure out if it's possible. I think they were going to report back to the Foreword Housing Committee, but my, sticking my nose in it, was, you know, hearing, there are a lot of challenges there. The soils, you know, the engineer looked at the soils, you know, that the.
There's a lot of granite there, or ledge, I should say.
Well, there's a lot of ledge and stuff, but the, but the soil, and I'm not sure what the material is, but the bottom line is that he, he does not expect it, if the, if the DEP maps and the map, the mass GIS maps that are all, they use as their first source are all accurate, it's going to be very difficult to perk up there, you know, the expensive system. He said he knows that he's worked on some of the, you know, the Moon Hill properties up there for Title V challenge, you know, that have had to put new systems in. They're, they are expensive systems. And then as we knew, trying to put a road into there is going to be expensive.
But a driveway would be okay.
A driveway would be okay, but it's going to be for one house, so.
But if you don't have to purchase the property, it becomes a little bit more financially viable.
Yep. So he was going to try and put together a little bit of a budget based on what he, you know, the septic, the road, et cetera, so that the Foreword Housing Committee can look at that before they decide whether or not they put the $10,000 out.
Makes sense.
Something else that I meant to ask you about that we need to start for Springtown, oh, oh. How can we get some reasonable guestimates on what it would cost? Because if, if we really do go forward with the old town hall, then that article should be on the Springtown meeting as well, which means we've got to have at least some rough idea of what we're going to ask CPC to contribute for that.
You mentioned before you're going to maybe.
So, I mean, is, is Mr. Bullock capable of?
Yeah.
Giving us a guesstimate on this as to what he thinks would be required to make that a usable building?
Absolutely. I mean, and, you know, and he can also draw on some other resources as well. You know, at some point, we could, if we really wanted to get a number that's unbiased, you know, independent would be a better word. You know, we might, after, we'll help Bob do it, and then maybe if we want to continue down that path, is, is ask the advisory board for some funds to, to do a little planning.
We increased theirs to fifty grand, didn't we?
Really? At the time, we put fifty, twenty-five thousand back into that fund, so we have fifty thousand there. So, you know, even if we took a couple thousand out to hire a architect or an engineer to give us a feasibility, you know, do a feasibility study, that might be money well spent. But, like I said, we'll help Bob do it first.
Yeah, I mean, could we move on that? I mean, because, I mean, while we still got a little bit of good weather?
Do you know what, what the scope is, though? That's the, I think that's where we kind of.
Like what the next?
Well, I mean, to restore to a usable facility would be the scope. I mean, uh.
But just like, we're going to make it just space like this. I mean, it's going to be meeting room space. Is that?
Basically, an office space. I mean, the way it's, the way it's constructed now, you've, you've got two big rooms upstairs, if I remember, and then you've got offices downstairs. You, I mean. Which was on the side. I mean, I don't know what ADA issues we might have to deal with if, in terms of restoring.
So you're not, so, so at least for the first look, we're not looking at changing any wall space or anything? We're just looking at shoring up.
Especially if it's going to be CPC funds, I think you're going to have to restore it somewhat to its original state to a certain degree. I mean, modernized, obviously, and all of that. But, but the structure of it was usable, very usable. Well, that's what I'm saying. I don't know what the issue. Yeah, that was a steep stairway in the back. Or actually, it was in the front.
Might have to take the, maybe take the, I don't know if you can take the safe out and put an elevator in with it? That's a huge safe. Put an elevator in where the safe is, maybe. I don't know if that's possible.
I don't know. I mean, there's just stuff we need to look at, to see what we need to do or not do. But, I mean, the, the structure of it, for, I mean, for offices, for, for the various boards, especially, you know, I mean, I could see historical, using that entire downstairs to put old pictures of Norfolk and, and, you know, do what they do best, to, to make that a really neat place. And really have them be the focus, and they just have meeting rooms. But I know there are other departments that need space.
No.
Well, the water department could use an office.
Water department could use an office. One of the things that Bob has talked.
Meeting rooms is what we need.
Well, yeah, one of the things that Bob has talked about is, he's looked, Bob McGee, has, has looked at the old water building, which the fire department really has taken over. The garage up behind, but there's a, there's a little office space in there, too. In a perfect world, if we, if we redo the public safety building and move all the fire trucks there, I'd love to put the water department back into that garage back there. Because it gives them the garage space that they need, and it gives them, you know, an office for. It really just is the superintendent during, you know, he's really the one that needs office space, but three other guys for, you know, just come in and use their stuff and.
So is the actual office still in there? That was just a garage?
Not, not much, but there's a little bit of an office.
It's an oversized closet.
Yeah. There's a back room, too. I mean, there's, there's, there's work, it's not really office space. There's, there's work area for them. I think you could fit one office in there. But it's a nice garage. It's a, you know, so anyway, so, you know, not, not.
No, I, I just, I, time slips away. You know, I mean, we're going to find ourselves, the warrant's got to be done by probably, what, mid-February? So, you know, here we are. We got a month, we got, you know, less than two months to figure out what's going to go on that Springtown meeting. Huh?
Nothing. No, I was saying, nothing. I was being my usual sarcastic self, talking about my vacation time that I get planned.
Ski town.
Yeah, we're not going to be able to have town meeting this year.
Okay. Well, start with Mr. Bullock.
I will.
And if he thinks we need, you know, a second opinion or a feasibility study, let's get that done so that we are prepared to take CPC, because they're going to need some time for consideration.
Yeah.
And they can't work in the dark. They, they don't know what it might or might not entail. Now we know that it can be done, for sure, because we know of two towns that have done exactly what we want to do. We, we've got to get some specifics for them to be able to decide whether or not they'll be supportive. Hopefully, they will.
Be great.
Because if we could get that appropriated, then we could start working the summer.
Be fun. Be fun, I've been, I've said it before, be a fun project.
It'd be a great project.
Yeah, get it back to life.
Yeah, bring it back to life, and we could use the space.
All right, the CP, the, in the Beacon, they talk about the, you know, the CPC money is, they're starting to release it.
It's down again, isn't it?
It is down.
Yeah, it's twenty-six, twenty-seven percent, something like that.
But they do say that the, you know, the people at three percent get a higher percentage. I, I, I'm, I, I wish we hadn't gone down that path of lowering that, but I understand the impact on tax rates and all that. Especially if we're going to do a project like this, which I think is, you know, and I still think there are some other long-term projects that we could do. It'd be helpful.
I understand. Okay, other business? When was our next meeting? I know we decided not to meet next week, right?
Yeah, well, we can talk about that. Right now, we don't have anything scheduled till January, so it's up to you.
That's a long time. Holidays?
And then it's January, so.
Now, why did we not, because today's, how come we didn't do the twenty-second? Too close to?
Too close to Christmas. We had a. Too close to Christmas. I mean, we had a, we can do whatever you want.
No, no, I'm, yeah.
Why don't we do like a daytime meeting? Oh, you, you work, I'm sorry.
Jeff does, too. I think I, I'm across the street. I have probably a better chance of getting in, I have a better chance of getting in than Mr. Palomba. I wouldn't do that to him. If he's, if he's amenable, I'm amenable to that. After, you know...
It'd be tough for Jeff.
Yeah, it would be, yeah.
Well, can we pencil in the 22nd if we need it, and we can always cancel it?
We are going to have to vote the other tax licenses as they come through, so that's one thing we need to do.
So why, why don't we, why don't we at least pencil that in? Is that okay with you, Scott?
It's penciled.
Penciled?
Penciled. Hoping to cancel, but penciled. We can have a Christmas party that night, too, like after. We can, we can do a little, you know, town Christmas party. I'm sure you already throw one, but, you know.
Okay.
I'm sure Jim has plenty of red wine he can bring in.
Sure he does. Some...
All right, any other business, guys?
I'm good, thank you.
You're welcome.
Motion to adjourn?
So moved. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you for, for joining us this evening, and we, we certainly hope that everyone has a very safe and joyful holiday with their family. Enjoy, be safe, and may it bring you much happiness. Merry Christmas, Happy Hanukkah. May you celebrate whatever holiday you so choose during this holiday spirit. Enjoy it.
Thank you. Well said.